There really are a variety of different policies out there, really four that you will find prevalent. You'll find a policy that's very similar to the one we have today, which eliminate, which does not count those non-productive work hours as part of your overtime. There are other policies that will count the benefits that you take as towards that particular, which is what is being proposed tonight. And there's what I consider to be the hybrid, which there are a handful of municipalities around the state that have carved out the benefits, the accrual times and like, and they've put them into buckets. So for example, you may find a city that will not pay overtime if an employee takes sick leave, and you may find another entity that may not pay it if they take vacation. So there's, I'm considered them hybrid, if you will, in this analysis. What we did find is that those that, those cities that have begun to move into a scenario of eliminating productive work week periods and the various elements there, there within, we found that they were doing it primarily to, as an enticement and added benefit to for employees. Many of the, many of the policies that we found originated in negotiations under a memorandum of understanding with labor groups, and ultimately, the city elected to modify the policies for the entire organization. And I think that's important to note, because from my perspective, we are recommending a policy change for the entire organization. This is not a specific impact or benefit to any one particular department or any one particular group. However, what you will find is that it really is, it really is focused on public safety, police and fire. They are the, they are the two departments that will, that traditionally encounter overtime within their day-to-day operations and those employees. And you can see from the information that I had sent out to council previous, the biggest financial impacts are within those departments. And so, I'm going to let Scott talk a little bit about the proposed policy, a little bit of the history on what brought us to this point, how, what our policy has been over the years. I'll talk a little more about the financial obligations and how we intend to address that. What I'm looking for from council this evening are really two things. Number one is to make any comments that you might have on the proposed changes to the policy, because essentially, the mayor and council will be required to consider the policy amendment if you so choose. And the second is the timing of that, whether or not this is something that we would look to change over in this fiscal year that we're in, or start at a July 1 with a new fiscal year date. So with that, I'm going to hand it to Scott and let Scott move into more of the technical and, and history on this particular policy.
Thank you, Larry. And as he's, Larry suggested this evening, we're discussing a policy relating to employee compensation, something that is called productive work period. Or simply put, this involves what hours are to be included in the total hours credited in a designated work period, not necessarily work week, but a work period upon which the overtime calculation is based. And I want to point out upfront that the current city policy has been in place since 2006. So over the last 17-plus years, we've been doing this, the same thing. By way of a little more background, the Federal Fair Labor Standards Act, FLSA, was passed way back in 1938, and has lots of issues around minimum wage and what have you. But it was, and it's been amended many times over the years, including amendments that were passed in 1974 and 1985 as it relates to applicability to municipal government employees. The FLSA includes all of the details concerning when an employer must pay an employee overtime. In response to the 1985 amendments, the city of Casa Grande implemented the provisions that provided for the selection of a work period of up to 28 consecutive days for public safety employees. It was called the 7K exemption. And, meaning the overtime liability would not be calculated until the last day of the designated work period. Our policy says that all non-worked hours, vacation, sick, holiday, and other types of leave are deducted from the total hours worked in a work period before overtime would be calculated. As Larry suggested, the largest impact is on police and fire. But back in, in 1985, we designated seven consecutive days for most all of our employees, 14 consecutive days for uniformed employees in the fire department, and 28 consecutive days for employees, uniformed employees in the fire department because of their shift schedule. In implementing that, though, and it's one of the curses of being around for so long, remembering all of those details, we really wrestled with the fact that the fire department could need to take, somebody in the fire department could need to take a, a day of sick leave on the, on day one of the 28-day work period, and would have to carry that liability all the way through 28 days. So we, we talked about that, we debated that, we sought special opinion, but the decision was ultimately made in 1985 to put only fire department uniformed employees on a totally non-productive work period. So that was chosen back in 1985. In other words, for those employees, all hours worked would count as hours worked when calculating, or all hours, worked or non-worked, would count as hours worked calculating overtime liability for those employees. Along the way, just by way of note, the Arizona Legislature, as it chooses to from time to time, decided to step in in relationship to law enforcement employees, and basically said that you can only designate seven consecutive days for law enforcement employees, and that trumped the federal FLSA. So since that legislation was passed a number of years ago, everybody has a seven consecutive day work period except in the fire department. In 2006, there were several issues under discussion and consideration relating specifically to uniformed employees in the fire department. And through all of that debate and discussion, the decision was made to implement a productive work period for all fire department uniformed employees coming to work after July 1 of that year, 2006, and grandfather in all of the existing employees in their non-productive work periods. So at that point in time, there were two classes of fire department uniformed employees created after July 1, 2006, all those that were totally non-productive, and all those going forward that would be productive. Now, there were a number of discussions and, and trade-offs, if you will, that went into that. At that time, we also moved from the 28-day work period for fire department employees to a 14-day work period. So for those employees who went totally productive, coming to work after July 1, 2006, they just dealt with a 14-day work period, not a 28-day work period. Were also some issues related to accrual of, of leave time that were inconsistent, and those changes were made. But perhaps most significantly, in 2006, what we call a bump-up policy was implemented to compensate employees in acting roles. So if you think about, talking about all of these issues together at that particular point in time, the bump-up policy was put in place. In other words, if a fire captain, for example, was absent from a shift, typically a fire engineer would bump up to captain, a firefighter would bump up to fire engineer, and then, and then the vacant position would be filled, and those that were in those acting roles would be compensated for the time that they were acting. So that's automatically bump up. So we created all the codes that were necessary for that. And so for the first time, prior to that time, the idea of, and this is an interim, this is bumping up, okay? The idea was that if you were in a, in a bump up, if you were filling a role, that was part of what was, what was going to happen as you were, you were getting ready to step up in those promotional situations. But that changed in 2006, and so the bump-up policy was put in place. And of course, that is how things have been over the last 17-plus years in relationship to, to all of those circumstances, including productive work period. And as Larry suggested, we always want to know what other cities do and, in their operations, particularly those comparator cities that we compare ourselves with on the compensation plan. And so, as he suggested, they were all across the spectrum, some fully productive, some fully non-productive, some with carve-outs or hybrid, as Larry says, like holidays that are not being included. And as he's also suggested, for some of those entities, and particularly some of the larger entities, those things were, were, had taken place and became a part of, of what they do through the meet-and-confer process in terms of formal relationship there. City managers already provided you with information on the dollar impact of calculations that we've done if the decision was made to implement a fully non-productive work period policy. As you might guess, the impact is substantially in, in the police and fire departments, and we estimate the total impact, based on actuals for fiscal '22, '23, we estimated the total impact of $300,000 plus salary-based fringe, and 250 of that 300 was in police and fire. So most of our other departments, the administrative departments, we default to compensatory time, not paid overtime. And so beyond that, in public works, sometimes in community services, parks maintenance, where they're paying overtime. So that's the picture in relationship to the productive work period issue. And so I think between the two of us, we'll, we'll try to answer any questions.
And so, Mr. Mayor, if we can, answer any of the technical questions and focus primarily on the proposed modifications that were sent to the mayor and council in your council packet, if you have any specific questions on the removal. As I've indicated prior, the, the policy change is not, is really pretty straightforward, right? You're essentially, you're essentially taking those non-work hours out of the equation. And so with that, would entertain any questions, and we can talk specifically about a start date thereafter.
Mr. Lavender.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So when we talk about the overtime that, that's being paid out, this is mandatory overtime, am I correct? These are assigned work hours that they're expected to work, and if they don't work, they could be subject to disciplinary action, am I correct?
Well, I want to make sure that I'm understanding your, your question specifically, Councilmember Lavender. This, the calculations that we have, that we have made are for both. In the fire department, there is a standard overtime that is, that is included in, in their 56-hour work week. That, I would tell you that this particular policy and the modifications, the proposed modifications, will not impact that significantly. What we are talking about primarily is when an individual takes off for a shift and there's not a bump up-
Right.
-and we're hiring somebody to cover in that, that is, that's where the, it's primarily applicable. So is that-
So I think I just heard you say, Larry, that firefighters work on average about 56 hours a week, correct?
They, their standard workout, work period is 56 hours.
Through a, through a 40, what we call a 48-96 schedule.
Right.
Right.
Councilmember Lavender, if you're referring specifically, you saw the policy relating to overtime, and it basically says that, that failure to work overtime is, subjects an employee to disciplinary action.
Right.
And the fact is, as Larry's indicated, there's built-in overtime in the, we call it FLSA overtime in the fire department's schedule. Beyond that, we have, just, we have policies relating to holdover and callback and what have you. But specifically, if an employee is directed to work overtime, and they refuse that, they are subject to disciplinary action. But we have call-out lists, like in the public works department, because you never know whose might be available in the street division, for example, if we have a flood and they have to do barricades. So we have call-out lists, so the idea of, of somebody, somebody saying, you know, I had a, I had a tall one at home, and so I can't now go out and, and drive a city vehicle, we have to, we have to be able to allow for that.
Right. And so I get that. But I, I don't like the word overtime, because this is part of their responsibilities, where it's overtime because of federal laws of 40 hours a week. And so we're following that. But at the same time, this is the expectation, and so when they are requesting time off for vacation, or they're requesting time off for sick leave, they're losing money because they're not working, because if they were working. And that's the dilemma that I see is, we want to make sure our public safety officers, well, fire, police, and all are healthy. We want a, a healthy workforce. And when we're, have a policy in place that asks for somebody to make a decision when they may not be mentally alert and ready to work, if I take off today, I'm going to lose money for my family, and they're on the job when mentally or physically they shouldn't be there, I have an issue with that. And so for me, I'd like to see us vote on this, and I think we should retroact it to January 1.
Bob?
Scott, could you address if comp time figures into productive work week? And also, you kind of touched on it just now, but can you, can you address standby time if our employees are getting paid for standby?
Standby is, is extremely, extremely limited. And Bob, right off the top of my head, you put me on the spot, I think the, I, I, I'm just saying it's very, very narrowly used, very infrequently used in terms of paying somebody to be on standby. The fact is, is that the very early in the FLSA discussion, we talked about the issue of, of having employees subject to, to call back, and having them be in pager range and what have you. And so actually, we ended up asking for a, a letter from the Department of Labor to provide us clarification on what's restrictive, what's so restricted that we have to pay for. And that's well-established at this point in time in, in case law. So, so as far as, as far as standby, it's not used a lot.
Okay. And, and the issue of comp time, if an employee takes comp time during the, the week, does that count against his productive time?
We, we have no comp time usage in the fire department, so it's, it's total cost of service there is represented. It's a limited use in the police department, and it's used in most of our administrative and, and most of the other departments. And if it is accrued beyond the 40-hour, and if productive 40 hours, it has to be accrued at time and a half. If it's used, it is deducted before the overtime calculation.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Lisa?
And I have similar concerns, Councilmember Lavender, as far as, you know, the, the employees, we have to remember, these are earned benefits when it comes to paid time off, sick leave. And so to me, it just seems like it, it shouldn't be taken, taken out. So I like the fact that we're, we're changing this, I like the fact that it's for all employees. And as our city grows, our departments grow, I know what affects police and fire, but you know, we want a competitive edge too. So I personally like to see it removed rather than a hybrid, because it's just so confusing. You know, what we're going to include, what we're not going to include. And again, these are earned benefits that they, that they've earned. So it shouldn't be complicated, they shouldn't have to, you know, go in even though, you know, they're, they're going to have that overtime, you know, go in on, on a sick day that they were going to take off. So I, I like the fact of do it, just removing and, and not the hybrid. So as far as, you know, I'm, I'm open to retroacting or July, but I think effective January 1 would be the right thing to do also.
Oh, Bob?
I had more.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
No, 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 I, I mean, since you spoke.
Oh, oh, okay.
I wanted to agree with Lisa. I know from an employee standpoint, it doesn't feel fair, because if I, if I put in for two days vacation in two weeks, and I take those two days, and then four or five days later, there's some big incident, and I get called out, to be told, well, you're not getting overtime pay for those because you took vacation earlier in the week, that doesn't feel fair. And the amount of money we're talking about that you just quoted, I, I think there's only one reason to, to have this policy, and that's to save money. And, and of course, we're tasked with, with-
Taxpayer money.
Yeah. I mean, we, we have to spend that money smartly and conservatively, and, and we, we have to look for opportunities to save. But I, I know from experience that, that, that feeling of my hours got cut because I took a, a benefit either sick or vacation, and now I'm not getting the time and a half overtime for something that may have called me out from home in the middle of the night and disrupted all of my family plans and, and everything. I think it just doesn't feel fair. And so I, I think I'm agreeing with Lisa in saying that I, I think the restrictions should be removed.
I would point out, call-out is paid at time and a half, no matter what.
Well, and I think that was an adjustment way back when, when this came, came on board, we kind of had to negotiate that for that very reason, but I, I appreciate that, that has been, has been changed.
So that doesn't affect this, that doesn't affect this?
Callouts.
If you get callouts?
Callout, that's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's not in this equation? Okay. Just make sure. Well, I, I'm going to come out and say that I don't think we should do it. I think that we are responsible for taxpayer money. I think that the benefits are benefits, right? So if somebody gets paid time off, PTO, they can use it when they want, they get paid, they're off work, they're not working. And I understand that it might cut some of their, their overtime pay that people tend to rely on, and I get that, I understand that. But I also think that, you know, it's, it's a benefit for them to get the PTO and, and to take it when they want to take it. And that if it cuts out, you know, it cuts down on their time because they're now not getting paid overtime, it's part of, it's part of the PTO. I mean, it's, you're not working, right? They're not working. So they're not, didn't actually work overtime in reality. So I, I don't, I don't, and I don't come from that world, so, you know, I speak from a, more of a business background. And as a business person, you know, I want to pay my people fairly, I want to treat them right, I want them to be healthy, you know, to someone's point made earlier, but I also think that we should pay for work done. And if the work wasn't done, then why am I, as a citizen, paying overtime for somebody who didn't work overtime? So that's just my two cents. Anybody else?
I have a couple of technical, or for me, when we started to switch to the PTO, which I think most people are on PTO now, did that affect this a lot in this, how this works, or not really?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Herman, I, I would not say that it affected it a lot, because our employees were still accruing vacation and sick. And I don't know the exact number of individuals that we have on the vacation-sick accrual. Last I saw, it was in 60 or 70 employees. It started out at 100, just to give everybody a context. But if the council recall on that particular policy, when we implemented it, we gave everybody the opportunity to change. We then ultimately said for the, I, I think it was the next year, individuals had a right to select which program they wanted to be in, and then it was a hard stop after we had done the evaluation after the, after a year. And every employee that have, that has come on since that point has, has, has been assigned PTO. I, I think generally speaking, if you talk to the employees, the, those individuals that have moved to the PTO system, they will tell you that they're, they're more happy with the flexibility of that particular program than they were, than they were with just the standard vacation-sick. And I understand why some of the employees elected to stay in that program, but as far as an impact generally to, to this policy, I, I don't see it having a significant impact either way, if you're on PTO or vacation-sick.
And then, so the other thing that, that is hard, or that's different, is that when you take a day off as an employee, say, that works in City Hall, that's eight, eight hours typically. But if a firefighter or police, or mostly firefighters, that's 24 or 48 hours off, right? If you take off two shifts, so that's where the, where this, this comes in. And then the other thing I'm concerned about is the budget, obviously. So I know you, you've given some numbers here, and I know that we put, but, we put the overtime in the budget. So I, I'm concerned if it's in there for this year, or next year, or how, and are, are we pretty sure with this number of 300?
It's a little more than that, isn't it, Larry?
Thousand?
On an annualized basis.
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Herman, if I can, first of all, let me just go back and address a couple of the points that were, that were made along the way in, in regards to, in regards to the calculation, then I'll move to the, the dollar figure question specifically. So first and foremost, understand that, that typically, the difference between public safety and most of the other operations in the organization is that when a, when an employee in the public safety role takes a day off, we are backfilling. We have somebody coming in to serve in that spot. There are some exceptions in the fire department, but, but for the most part, there is a, there is a management decision that gets made about whether or not we're going to have somebody to backfill. That's the driver of your overtime typically. Within the numbers that we've, that we have shared, the overall budget authority numbers, there are a number of grants that are specifically focused to, to police department now that is driving about a half of that overtime, that are grant funds for us to go out and provide a specific duty. And, and so just to make sure that's clear, I do want to come back and address Councilmember Huddleston's comment about comp time. Certainly in today's world, Mr. Barber's absolutely right, if somebody takes comp time, that gets counted as a non-worked hour. So they would, if they worked overtime the next shift, they would not be, they would be paid straight time versus overtime. The employees are still, still getting paid straight time today until they've reached that 40-hour, that 56-hour threshold. With this, with this policy, comp time would not be included in, at that point. Okay? So let's talk a little bit about the financial aspects of it. And I think I've stressed this along the way, determining the exact dollar figure of a, to eliminate these productive pay, to modify the productive pay policy is very difficult to do, because every year, your time off, time off patterns are going to change. You're not going to take the same vacation time, PTO time, or sick time. And so what we did as a staff to establish the threshold, because we understood there was going to be a potential financial impact, is we went back to the prior, was it calendar year or fiscal year, Scott?
22, '23 fiscal.
22 fiscal year, and we essentially evaluated timesheet to timesheet if individuals had been paid straight time versus time and a half. That particular total, as, as we looked at one year in, as a snapshot, that particular total suggested that we would see an increase of roughly $300,000 in overtime expenses for that particular year. I have, for that one year, I have annualized that in the number that I've given of $400,000 because we've had employee raises-
Raises.
-and we've all, and we've also added more employees.
Yeah, more employees.
So you can anticipate that both of those are going to drive an impact on this particular number. And so for fiscal year '25, we are anticipating somewhere in the vicinity, if everybody uses similar types of patterns, about a $400,000 additional impact in overtime costs.
Yeah, and so everybody understands, this is a, it's, it goes from 2.2 million that we pay out in overtime today to 2.6 million paid out in overtime, and that's forever. It doesn't go away. It's not, yeah, and it'll keep growing as we add more employees, as we, as we, as we give raises.
The only point, Mr. Mayor, that I'd like to point out to that is that there is a sizable amount, probably half of the 2.2 million, that is attributed to grants, right? That it, it is not related to our day-to-day operations, it is, it is grant funding that we specifically are allocated for specific detail where individuals are traditionally earning overtime to provide that.
And Larry, does this, does this account, does this also impact the PSPRS?
Obviously, with any additional increase in wages, our PSPRS rate will increase. When I say rate will increase, there, the, the burden, the, the amount that we have to pay to PSPRS, the contributions will increase annually as well. I, I will say that we've recently gone through, we've recently got our actuarial reports from the PSPRS, and we have seen that they are proposing a higher rate for the upcoming year. We, we anticipate, as the council knows, we issued a bond to essentially, to essentially fully fund the pensions for both systems, police and fire. And, and we had hoped that that would essentially cover, give us a bit of a runway, if you will, on being 100% funded, but with some of the accrual adjustments, actuarial adjustments, we have seen that we have dropped from 100 to roughly 95 and 96% in each respective system. I talked to the mayor briefly about that today and explained that what we plan to do for next fiscal year is essentially allocate an additional $1.5 million to get that back to fully funded. But, but to answer your question, Mayor, the, the, any time an employee earns additional money, and this will obviously do that for those individuals working overtime, the contribution to both ASRS as well as PSPRS will increase as well. Not the percentage, but the amount that is paid.
Right. Mr. Lavender?
And Larry, I'm not sure you did this, but when you talk about a $300,000 increase, did you look at how much of that 300,000 is the, is this based on paying firefighters that are on vacation or sick leave that time and a half time they would be earning if they were working? What percentage- What percentage of that 300,000 is this? Or what, or what is the percentage of that 300,000? Because we're bringing somebody else in and paying them time and a half when that person's off. Do you have a rough?
We are, I'm not sure that we analyzed it specifically of that nature. We essentially looked at a scenario where you had an employee that was off on one of the accrued times, that had, one of the benefited times. If somebody had come in and would, and had, were covering the shift, and we looked at the variance between what they were paid at straight time versus what they would have been paid at overtime.
Right. Because I think Councilmember Huddleston talked about a savings. We're also saving the city money by not having extra personnel to cover some of these shifts and asking people to come in as well. That's, that's a cost in itself. And so there's all kinds of costs built in.
That is, that, that particular scenario is really applied to some of the internal policies. Mr. Barber outlined one of those, the bump up. Those types of internal administrative policies that both, I know that all of our department directors are looking at are intended to, in an attempt to reduce the financial impact to the organization. And that includes items such as bump up, that includes items such as comp time and the like. Where we're not having what I would consider to be a financial outflow of cash. We're ultimately using management tools to replace, to, to, to replace the financial obligation, if you will.
I was going back to the, the grant portion of this.
Yes.
I mean, is that like Stone Garden type stuff? How much, do you know how much that is?
I, I don't have the exact number, but, but my, my understanding is that it would be nearly one-half of the 2.4 million. It's, it's a sizable amount.
If we don't get that grant, then we wouldn't.
There, that, those costs would not be incorrect.
Is that correct?
Correct. That is correct.
I mean, because that's like a net, that's kind of a net zero.
That's right. That's right.
Lisa?
And Mayor, I wanted to go back to your point because I really thought about this. You know, as far as, you know, having again, your own business and how, how, you know, we calculate it. But again, you, you talk about an earned benefit. And so I understand your point. You know, they're taking PTO, they're taking sick time, they're taking vacation. But they, they may have had this planned a year in advance or, you know, whatever. And so they're still taking that PTO time though. So they're, they're taken away from their PTO. So why aren't they getting that number back in to, to calculate for the overtime? So it, these are still earned benefits that they're getting. And so I, it, I mean, I, I was, you know, really back and forth on the whole thing. But then when I thought about it and thought about the fairness and, you know, that these are earned benefits that they're using, they're using their PTO, they're using their sick time. So why aren't we calculate, you know, letting them, you know, keep, put those numbers in there? So again, I, I just think it, it, it's the fair thing to do too.
Do you pay your employees overtime when they, when they use their PTO?
Because they use, because they use their sick time. So we have columns where they have eight hours sick time, eight hours, and then anything over, because those are calculated in the forty hours. And then, and then, you know, have them, you know, whatever. They don't, our employees don't work that much overtime. I mean, maybe it's thirty minutes, you know, staying a little bit overtime. But with, but we have columns where they have their hours allocated for each category, their earned benefits. And we keep track of all those, and it's in every paycheck. So, I don't know.
Okay.
Go ahead, Dawn.
Okay, so I made some notes here because I know we're, we're on time. But I think that, you know, and Lisa makes a good point. And I've looked at it from two different angles because I was twenty years nonprofit and twenty years government. And so I've seen both sides of the spectrum. When you talk about earned time, it is earned time. You know, employees work hard to build up their vacation time. We want them to use their sick time efficiently every way that they can. So that is earned time. And when we're talking about, Jeff mentioned it, retention is a really big issue. And that's part of, in today's world, employers are having to, to explain to people why you should want to work for us. And these are the benefits of why, and this is what we have. And one of those is the time off. And the PTO is a little bit different from what I currently have. But I like the idea that it's equal for all employees. It really has to be that. When we talk about the budget, I am concerned about where that's going to come from because of the fact, and you mentioned the two point, going up to 2.6. I know that the police department is really great about having opportunities for those kind of grants. I don't know that the fire department has options for those kind of grants. And when they talk about overtime for police, it's like the Stone Garden or the DUI details that they have for, you know, for special things. So I think that it's hard to compare the two. And I think that the police department is a great example of using the best resources they can. I don't know that the fire department has done that or they have the opportunity to do that, especially for overtime. I don't want money to be taken away or services to be taken away from other departments in order for this to happen. But I, I will say that I think, much like what Lisa said, you know, if, if I work a forty-hour week and I have two days that I take off at eight hours vacation, right there is sixteen hours. And so to, to separate that, you know, from my regular, and that's how, that's how the county does it as well. So, I mean, I understand both. And I think the overtime and the time and a half is really important for us to look at. I just, my worry is the budget and where it's going to come from and who it's going to affect, especially services from other departments.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, just address that very, very quickly for Councilwoman McBride. First and foremost, we are not, the, the proposal would not be to ask other departments that may not have an overtime liability, if you will, to cover the budget authority necessary for the departments that may. Our plan is to ultimately look within each, within each department to, to come up with the savings. Ultimately, I, I, as I sit here today, I anticipate that our revenue stream will, will offset the additional costs associated with the proposals. I can say that. If there is a time, and there may very well be at some point in time, that, that this becomes something that becomes more evaluated, I would say that it's very likely that it will get evaluated within our total compensation. Meaning that, that we, each year, we've, we've, or at least the last three years, we've worked diligently to re-implement the comp and class analysis. We've been trying to look at other benefits. We've been attempting to look at other types of, of, of income streams that we can implement in this organization. Intuitively, just like we have with overtime in the past, if, if we are, if we anticipate, we will be projecting it very early on as part of the budget. And if there are shortfalls, then it will likely come within other types of pay or benefits that we would be allocating that particular fiscal year. That would be at least my strategy to look at. But I, I'm not anticipating any reductions in programs and services at the present time. We would essentially ask each department to, to participate in some level of, of what I would consider to be a similar type of increase for, for this particular modification, policy modification to the impact to their budget, their department budget.
Thank you.
I just think that this, this whole productive work period is just kind of an end around in terms of people feeling like they're not compensated enough. If it's a compensation issue, then let's deal with it from a compensation issue. Why this is, these are benefits and people get time off. It shouldn't count towards overtime. That's just my opinion. So obviously, we're going to, we'll have to address this at some point in time. And I'm sure it'll be coming back to City Council. So I'm sure we'll have more spirited conversation about it. But I think we need to move on. I think we've talked about this enough. Can we move to item?
If I can, Mr. Mayor, just make one closing statement before, because you're absolutely right. Council must consider a resolution that would amend the policy. That would be the, the actual step. And certainly, we can put together a resolution that can continue the, the discussion on the part of the council before a vote. I, I will, I do want to address the issue about retro. That is something that I'm going to have to look into as to whether or not that's, that we could retroactively pay a benefit. I, I'm, I'm uncertain at this point. I can look into that. I, I definitely believe that once the resolution is passed and cured, we could implement this fiscal year and/or start it on July 1st with the new fiscal year. But I will put those, that evaluation and those options in the request for council action along with the policy amendment.
Well, there probably should be two, two different resolutions, then one for the start time and then one for the actual policy change.
We'll, we'll evaluate that on our team there and, and certainly articulate that.
Do the time change first.
Okay.
Just my suggestion.
If, if there's no other questions, Mr. Mayor, I'll move on to the next topic, which is a presentation related to the Suncorridor Metropolitan Planning Organization, the SEMPO Regional Transportation Plan. And it's an update, and that will be presented by Ms. Amy Moran. I know that she needs no formal introduction, but Amy, I'll hand the baton to you.
All right. Thank you, Larry and Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's good to be back here. I know I've got a bit of a compressed schedule here, so I'm going to try to walk through this program and, and hit the highlights. I will just maybe jump to something I would have intended to mention at the end. But the actual draft document of the Regional Transportation Plan is currently on the Suncorridor MPO website in its entirety for the public comment period through February 10th. So if there's information that I touch on today and you want to dig a little deeper, feel free to go in there and read through the whole thing yourself. So just as a reminder, the Suncorridor MPO is the designated planning area or organization for the cities of Costa Grande, Coolidge, Eloy, and rural portions of Pinellas County. It encompasses shy of about 1,200 square miles and a population of about 150,000 people. This regional transportation plan is a requirement. It's federally mandated to be updated every four years. That is because portions of the planning area are in what's called an air quality non-attainment area for PM 2.5 and PM 10 particulates. So they're required every four years to look at a plan of how they're going to invest their monies over the next twenty to twenty-five years to inform transportation investments. So today, I'm just going to talk a little bit about the objectives, some of the metrics that we use as we go through this process. What we did during the course of the project as it related to outreach. And then ultimately, what did we decide upon for the recommended investment strategy and how that relates to some of these projects of opportunity for the future. Objectives, again, I mentioned the federal requirements. There's also ADOT targets that need to be addressed. We wanted to make sure that we were engaging stakeholders. We wanted to make sure the plan was multimodal in nature. We really wanted to focus on investment strategies and opportunities. And again, making sure that we're adhering to those air quality conformity needs. Why are we doing this? What are we looking at? What are we up against? In a nutshell, the population and employment are both anticipated to approximately triple over the next twenty-five years. And so that's some considerable growth. And I'm sure as, as, you know, residents of the area, you recognize that there are already challenges with the transportation system. And so just thinking about how those could continue to grow as, as the population and number of employees in the region triples. I mentioned those ADOT targets. So ADOT is required as it looks at its transportation plan and the performance of its network to report on a variety of measures that you can see here. This is very particular to the actual state highway system, so the national highway system. The Suncorridor MPO through the RTP process has decided in the past that in perpetuity, they would also adopt these ADOT goals. So we need to address these in the context of the plan. However, we know that the greater majority of the transportation corridors and services within the Suncorridor MPO region do not fall on state highways. There's a lot of roadways within the region. And so as a group, it was decided that as the RTP was, was formed and recommendations were made, we wanted to make sure that we were also looking at the performance of the more local street systems. So focusing on those arterial and collector roads. How are people moving around? What are the conditions of the roadway system? How are we making decisions that help foster economic vitality? Looking again at what can we be doing better as it relates to transit service and ridership and recognizing that it's multimodal. So we need to, again, think about bicycles and pedestrians as well. And of course, environmental impact. So all of these are addressed at the local level in addition to those ADOT targets. We did have what I call essentially two stages of robust public and stakeholder outreach. The first was early in the process, so just about a year ago. And then later, we had our second round. That, both of them included public engagement. And in the early phases, we had some very particular stakeholder interviews. And now at the end of the process, we're here reaching out to the various city councils and as well as the county board of supervisors. Those first rounds of interviews, it was a very group. In addition to representatives from each of the member agencies, planning and economic development departments, we talked to Arizona Game and Fish, State Land Department, and the Army National Guard. And some of the things that we heard, of course, was the need for new roads to talk about redundancy. So in other words, having parallel corridors should something happen in one, what are our options? Maintenance, of course, is always important. And one of the interesting things I think that we heard was the need to make sure that people have options to get to work. So work was really important. Some of that factored in was transit. Then I know even here locally, one of the things we, we heard was freight. And I know that's an important consideration for Costa Grande. Public engagement, we had a variety of options. We did pop-up events, which is basically pegging, piggybacking off of an event that's already planned in a community and having presence at those events. We also advertised on, on buses so that people could scan a code and go and, and do an online survey while they were taking a transit trip. And then we also used utility bill inserts in some areas. We got about 130 people that responded. Our outreach was in both English and in Spanish. And what we learned was that yes, no surprise, the greater majority of people associate driving as their, their primary mode of transportation. What was interesting, I thought, was that you can see there are just about 20% of people also identified that walking was a really important mode to them. And that's a little bit different than what we have seen in some of the other communities and regions across Arizona. Primary trip purposes, work, no surprise, shopping, as well as medical, school, and then a variety of others. When we asked about their priorities, what was important for us to consider as we look at investing money? But the greatest response had to do with improving the existing road conditions and increasing capacity of existing roads and bridges. So focusing on what we have and just making sure that they're performing well or could we perhaps perform better? We also had, of course, a huge interest in that safety component. So those, those, that number 56 that you see there, as well as a pretty significant interest in expanding transit. When we went out to the second round, we were a little bit more concentrated on how do we think the money should be spent? So we were asking questions. We attended here at the Silent Witness event in Costa Grande in person, and we also had a supplemental online survey that folks could go on. And we did a variety of activities at that in-person event. And collectively, when we asked about identified priorities and we looked at a range of, ranging from safety to, you know, looking at roadways, implementing technology, focusing on transit, the greater majority of people were really, really concerned about safety, as I think we all are. And so that's always kind of top of the list when we talk about transportation investments. There was quite an emphasis on environment and technology, and I'll just touch on that a little bit. Especially here in Costa Grande, we had a pretty high percentage of the, the participants that were youth. And so when you start to talk about the environment and you talk about technology, I think those are things that they all associate with quite easily. Some of the people that were responding maybe aren't even drivers of the roadway system. So they're not even, you know, old enough to have a driver's license. So they, they may not identify quite as well as, well, there's a lot of potholes on the road that need to be fixed or something like that. So, so that's maybe where some of that feedback came. But of course, then we do still see the need for new and wider roads and maintenance as well. So when we asked them, how do we want to invest money? Should we be preserving what we have? Should we be modernizing or enhancing what we have? Or should we be expanding, so adding new roads, new roadway miles? It was relatively split. They thought all of it was important. We need to be looking at all of it. So when we get to the actual plan and we, we develop this recommended investment strategy, we have, certainly have to, to think about what the, the public is telling us. We need to look at those metrics that I, that I mentioned earlier in the presentation. And we need to look at how our system and services are performing relative to those metrics. Where might we, we need to be making investments to move the needle to enhance some of those areas? And so where we landed was a recommended investment choice of 50% of funds going towards modernization. So those would be safety improvements, ADA compliance, technology. Expansion was 15%, so that's building new roads, bridges, trails, or additional roadway lanes. And then 35% for preservation. So that's, you know, taking care of our pavement and bridge conditions through rehabilitation or reconstruction. So there in the center, you see what, that, that, the recommended investment choice. On the left-hand side of the screen, you see the actual Sun Corridor MPO resources. So this is money that is directly obligated to Sun Corridor MPO. They need to decide how to spend it. You can see historically, they've done, you know, fairly well in, in adhering to that, that recommended investment choice. On the right-hand side, you see, if you look at all of the regional resources. So that's that money that's directly obligated to them, as well as money that they receive from grants. For example, Highway Safety Improvement Program monies. Those are competitive grants for which, you know, communities in the Sun Corridor must apply and be selected. They've actually dedicated a higher portion of the total regional resources towards that modernization category, as well as the expansion category. And again, a lot of that is just quite simply because that's where those grant opportunities exist. This one is, again, just comparing the center, the recommended investment choice versus the total regional resources. And then on the left-hand side, you see the public investment choice of the third, third, third. And this just really to illustrate, you know, there may have been concern about, wow, you know, we're only saying 15% to expansion as our recommended investment choice. The public is telling us 36%. Well, if you look at how money is actually being allocated in the region, it's a quite larger percentage than that 15%. So, so we think that the 15%, 35%, 50% is a recommended investment choice, recognizing that there are other grant opportunities to help supplement those resources, can bring us a little bit closer to what the public is telling us they want to see as well. While keeping in mind that we have an obligation to try to maintain some of these metrics as it relates to the goal setting for ADOT and for the local roadway system. The plan itself is, is just that. It's a recommended investment choice or strategy. So it's not calling out specific projects like you might see in a capital improvement plan where it says, with this money, we're going to build this, 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 and this. Rather, it's just saying, this is how you think we should, we think you should be investing the money. But we do want to recognize that we need to identify some projects of opportunity that they could perhaps be thinking about right in, in the future as they, they think about spending this money. And so we called those projects of opportunity. We looked at, you know, what was in the previous plan, what of that is still relevant? What else might be required to address the adaptive performance targets? What might be needed to address regional priorities? And then this last one is kind of important. It's what should be included for future grant opportunities? A lot of those grants that are out there, particularly the federal grants, they're going to ask the question, is this project identified in a regionally adopted plan? If you can answer yes, you're already a step ahead from somebody who has to say no. So we want to make sure that if there's a project that a community thinks it could potentially be going after grant monies for in the future, we want to make sure it's on the list. So there's a very comprehensive list of these projects of opportunity that can be found in the appendix of the Regional Transportation Plan. I'm not sure if you guys got that in your handout. I know that we, we have a, a separate extract of that. If you're interested, we could certainly get it to you. I'm just going to highlight a few. The East-West Corridor, that was, you know, back in 2015, a design concept report was prepared. This is the corridor that would connect SR 347 in Maricopa or to I-10 here in Casa Grande, largely on the Velvista Corridor. The county is in fact getting ready to look at a more detailed study for that as we speak. The North-South Corridor, again, has some regional significance for the Sun Corridor MPO region, connecting I-10 up to US 60 in the north. Interstate 11, of course, a, a large, you know, regional priority and priority for the state. They're, they're looking at different phases of that environmental assessment. Of course, here, we've been talking about it for years, right? The I-10 widening, that, that DCR EA wrapped up in 2023 and still looking for money, but still forging ahead. And I know it's a huge priority for the region. Phoenix-Tucson Passenger Rail, NIS was done back in 2016. There has been some money that's been appropriated to now dig in a little deeper into that and see what some of those options might be, so that continues to move along. There's a Central Arizona Parkway, which would be a, a, a parallel route to the North-South Corridor in the, in the northern, northeastern portion of Pinell County that could have some regional significance, particularly to, you know, Coolidge and Eloy. Here in Casa Grande, a couple of projects that were meant, freight corridor roadway improvement projects. So that's at Thornton Road and Cottonwood Lane and Treacle Road and Jimmy Kerr Boulevard. And then the I-10 and Quartzon Road interchange. I went through that really fast, but I got two minutes left. I will just mention that, that the goal is to have this Regional Transportation Plan adopted by the Sun Corridor MPO Executive Board in March 2024 to adhere to the timelines. And that's really right now just pending on the air quality conformity analyses that's being done. So with that, we got about a minute and a half for questions.
That was quick. Well done.
I just had one question. I don't know if you can go back, but there was a vertical bar graph before the horizontal one. And it seemed that, they didn't jive to me. Yes?
Yes.
So improving, I'm pointing on my screen, but you can't see it. Improving existing road conditions and increasing capacity seems like the lion's share and building new roads, right? And then expanding transit, which is different, which we've done. Thank you, Lisa, Mike, and the board, everybody. But, but then when you go to the, the next graph, it switches drastically to
This one?
Safety. You know, whereas, and, and why are we getting two different results there? You know, because it seems to me that everybody I talk to, the people that I represent here, want more roads, bigger roads, and smoother roads. Which could be safety, technically.
And a lot of that does relate to safety. You know, a couple of things. First and foremost, I'll say that in that second round. So this is the second round of outreach, right? As compared to the first round of outreach. The initial round of outreach was largely online.
Okay.
So there wasn't as great of an opportunity perhaps to sort of explain some of the concepts. The second round of outreach was largely in person. So it was literally myself or one of my peers standing there, talking to the people and saying, I'm going to give you six marbles. And here's examples of these types of things. And, you know, how is, how are these important to you?
Okay. So transportation nerds like did, us did the first ones. And then you got people that were more involved on the second one. Okay. Because that's just the thing. And then safety is kind of broad because that could be wider roads or less potholes or bike lanes or sidewalks or new roads. So.
And plus the fact that the in-person, I noticed, was at the Coolidge, Eloy, and Casa Grande gained Silent Witness sites so that they were surrounded about safety issues.
Yes. Good point.
Yes.
But I think what you said, the important part is having those projects listed and they can fall under safety or under new or under, you know, expansion. So.
And one of the things I
As long as we get the funding.
One of the things I didn't really touch on, but there is an evaluation process as, as the member agencies are applying for the money that's obligated to Sun Corridor MPO. And though, there are a variety of factors in waiting where they ask about all of the questions. You know, what components relate to safety? What components relate to mobility? What components relate to? So, so those things are all considered when, when they're making the actual selection of projects that would receive funds.
Thank you. You did a great job on time. And we could go longer because I know of guys.
The mayor is pretty lenient, I should admit to that.
Go ahead, Lisa.
No, and Amy, I wanted to thank you. Yes, great job in the presentation and, and just being, you know, part of those surveys. I was at Silent Witness when I did this little survey and you gave me the marbles and you and Irene were explaining things. And so it's nice to see, and especially having you personally there. You know, because you are the expert and you were able to explain to people. And I saw you engaging with the community. So I just wanted to thank you for doing that. So it's nice to see the results.
It's always a pleasure to come down to Casa Grande and I appreciate, you know, that you all do often stop by for those events. So it's nice to see you there as well. And, and I thank you for your time. And if, nobody else has any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you, Amy.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tell Irene we missed her. She's sitting on the beach in Hawaii.
Is she still there?
Yes. Yeah, she's still there.
All right. We will stand adjourned. We will start again at 10 after.